All this regular session of the Red Oak City Council to order this Monday, July 21st, 2025 at 5:30 PM here at the Red Oak Fire Station located at 1904 North Broadway. Just a reminder, this meeting is open to the public and is available on Zoom and will be available on our YouTube channel. I don't see any changes to the agenda, so I would say number two is Pastor Hernandez on line. No? Okay. So number two is Pledge of Allegiance. Denise, would you like to speak? Lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vocal. Ashley.
Bradley.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Freidol.
Here.
Busters.
Here.
Petrie.
Here.
Number five, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Freidol. Bradley. Vocal. Bill.
Yes.
Freidol.
Yes.
Busters.
Yes.
Petrie.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Number six is Proclamations and Special Notices. It is a pleasure to be able to present Steve Adams with a proclamation for his service to economic development and to congratulate him on his retirement. Whereas Steve Adams, he is a C E C D, has been involved in economic and community development work in Montgomery County and the city of Red Oak for many years, contributing to efforts that support business growth and community improvement. And whereas Steve began his professional journey in Texas, which I didn't know that, in roles related to public relations and business development, which led him to economic development positions, including serving as the Chamber and Economic Development Director in Mansfield, Texas. And whereas Steve returned to Red Oak in 1992 to serve as the Director of the Red Oak Chamber of Commerce and Industrial Foundation and was part of the formation of the Montgomery County Development Corporation in 1995. I thought it was sooner than that. Whereas Steve later worked as the Field Specialist in Community and Economic Development for Iowa State University Extension and Outreach, and in 2021 returned to serve as the Executive Director of M C D C. And whereas during his time with M C D C, Steve has worked to address key local priorities, including housing, broadband access, retail development, and support for agriculture-related opportunities. And whereas Steve's familiarity with the community, practical experience, and thoughtful approach to local issues have been appreciated by many throughout his career. Now, therefore, I, Shauna Silvius, Mayor of the City of Red Oak, Iowa, do hereby recognize Steve Adams for his years of dedicated service to Red Oak and Montgomery County and offer the city's thanks and congratulations on the occasion of his retirement as Executive Director of the Montgomery County Development Corporation. In witness hereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Red Oak to be affixed this 21st day of July, and it is on there. And this copy will be for use, Steve. Do you have any words that you would like to share?
I asked Lisa what I should be prepared for, she wouldn't tell me, so I had a little suspicion here, but I just want to say it's been an honor, it's been a privilege, and quite honestly, as Sean well knows, having been in this position too, these things don't happen on the side of it. It takes a lot of people working together. The city's been a great partner, the county board supervisor, it's been a great partner. And a lot of the folks here on the city council have been great partners as well, so I do appreciate the help that I've gotten over the years. And I have big shoes to fill, right?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And thank you again for everything. For listening.
Oh, I'm not going anywhere.
See, that everybody's greatest volunteer now.
Yes, that's right.
A good deal. Thank you, Steve. Also, just a reminder of our National Night Out coming up Tuesday, August 5th, from 6 to 8 at Fountain Square. We will have another really good event with lots of vendors. And I think we estimate usually around 4,000 in attendance, so that's a great community event for Red Oak. Number seven is public comments. There's a three-minute limit, and you must sign in at the front door. I do have one for Karen Blue. Karen, would you like to come forward? State your name and address. And we will start timing.
Karen Blue, 606 Sunset Avenue here in Red Oak. This just comes about because I was at a planning and zoning meeting today. And as I sat there, and later I happened to be with another group of people, and we were discussing these things, and I thought, well, I'm just going to mention this at the council, and I think I alluded to it at the planning and zoning meeting as well. Sometimes I have the feeling, and I think others probably in town has a feeling too, that sometimes some of the councilmen and councilpeople, I should say, are not aware of some of the nuisances in town and some of the areas that we're discussing. But like the nuisances, they've not toured the town, and I was going to suggest that possibly they get a sweat of us or something, and you actually do a physical tour of the town. I know we did that years ago. And we toured, we actually, actually even got out and toured the, like, the water department and the buildings, and I don't know whether all of you that are on the council have toured all of those things or not, but we also drove the neighborhoods and looked at some of the nuisances, and I sometimes feel that maybe some of these would go away if the right people knew about it, and we wouldn't have to come and complain or read about it on Facebook.
All right, thank you, Karen. Number eight, department reports. The airport and cemetery, and then also nuisance and code enforcement. Hi, Kevin, come on up.
Good afternoon. My name's Kevin McGrew, I'm the airport manager, I've got a little report, I don't know if you've got it in front of you, but nine points that I just made an effort of, like always, we have our monthly meetings, the second Friday of every month, which is open to the public, if anybody just attended. Back in April, Nick Hildreth, the Airport Commission Chairman, and I went to the Iowa Airport Conference in Okoboji, Iowa, and had a good conference there. I had the pleasure of having the leadership class at the airport in April, that's always interesting. We also passed the Iowa State DOT inspection for our airport, was issued a license for a year, every year you have to get inspected, and then they issue a new license, so we're good there. We did have the Red Oak Ambassador's Flight Breakfast, June 29, things went very smooth, and the food was very good, but unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate much, there was a storm front that went through, so attendance was down. We only had one airplane fly in, which was a disappointment to me, but I can understand, nobody wants to fly into a thunderstorm, so it went well, and I hope to do it again next year. Spray season in July, we're starting to, well, about the 1st of July, we have three companies that run out of our airport, Meyerport Aviation out of Tarkio, Missouri, Pettis Aviation out of Atlantic, and Cedar Ridge Aviation out of Texas, so they're, all three of them have paid, they have agreed to our minimum standards, paid a ramp fee, and are running off of our property. And so far, things have been going very smooth.
Good.
July, rain, grass grows, so we're mowing the grass out at the airport every week. All the equipment's working well, so I'm sitting good there. And the number eight, as you probably are aware, the airport was trying for a grant for a new airport hangar. We put it out for bids, the engineers worked up a set of specs, we put it out for bids. A couple of things worked against us. One of the big companies we were hoping would bid was Henningston's out of Atlantic, but they had computer problems that morning, and were not able to get a bid in. And that was right when we were talking about embargoes on steel, so I think the bids came, all two bids came in very high, so on advice of the engineer, we declined all the bids. And we're going to make a few changes to hopefully lower the bids, and probably after the first of the year, put them out for bids again. So while it's a disappointment, it can understand, so I think, I think we'll get it done, it'll just be a year down the road. And the last item, we're planning for our annual Antique Flight Breakfast, June 26, or August 26, excuse me. And thank you for the city council's support, any questions that I can answer?
I just want to comment that we have a lovely airport, and we have lots of comments from other communities all the time, so and that is in part to you and the commission, so thank you for all you do.
Kevin said the flight breakfast went even better than we thought because of the storm rolling in.
Yes. Well, it was raining, and then the gravel and the parking was a little wet, but it was a very good time, so.
Now Cedar Ridge is out there still?
Well, they have two fixed-wing planes, in the past, about three, four years ago, they had 10 helicopters and the fixed-wing planes, well, they brought some, bought some property south of town, so all their helicopters are out south of town, and that is, I tell people, they had 10 helicopters, 10 pilots, 10 trucks, 10 truck drivers, 10 support people, it was just too much for our little airport, so, but I think by them moving down south, that made things, now they only have two planes and one truck at our airport, and things are a lot more workable for our size airport. Well, thank you for your support.
Thanks, Kevin.
And without the city council's support, we wouldn't be near as nice, and thank you.
All right. Cemetery Department, Brad Baker. And Ronnie, thank you for coming too.
True boss. So I also have submitted a report with answering any questions if you have. Kind of did things a little bit different this time for you, just to anger, I've been catching some flack on the number of vehicles, staff, parking and stuff at the cemetery, and why there's so many, so we, we do have a couple extra bodies this year, but I wanted to explain that right down where everybody was and all that, so everybody got brought up to speed on that part, so hopefully that helps a little bit. As far as new things, I guess, you know, I'm going to thank the Questers for another, what I hear was great event, I appreciate their support and all that. The continued partnership, you know, to make our cemetery better with the Questers and their ancillary group of supports committees, it's appreciated. We do have a couple other things, the kiosk is in a growth spurt right now, so Mo has put together a website, and we're gonna, the end of the week, actually be out, do a little formal launch, review as far as getting the information out, but this brings our military page, and we're gonna also be first responder page, so it's gonna bring those to bring life into those two things, so to him, Fred. Any other questions I can answer on the report list?
All I can say is, with your extra help we needed, with all the spring we had, and all the weeds and grass, I'm sure it's been made better out there.
Yeah, and you know, we've had several discussions, no matter what you call it, buffalo grass, the water grass, crab grass, you know, the, the rain has, you know, done nothing but fueled it, and I had a guy at the fair, he told me, he said, well, at least it's green, so.
Well, it looks beautiful.
You know, we'll, we'll stay on it, but the spraying scenario, as far as accomplishing much, wouldn't till we look at it and all, so we'll address that, and I've got a plan to kind of do what we did last year, so spraying helps.
How many more do you have?
Five in any given day, but maintenance issues and stuff, a couple of them are a little tired, so usually trying to make sure we got more.
I think also, like, the department has talked about some years with struggles with summer health, and we really do have a great crew that, you know, sometimes you just hit gold and strike out in other years, but we have, you know, people of all ages, and they're all doing a great job, you know, sometimes we give a certain rap to young people, but we have a really good crew, too, of the college-age kids, like, they're you know, I talked to Ryan this weekend, and you know, you send them out, and they do their jobs, and that really helps Brad to be able to focus on some of the things instead of strictly.
Yeah, very blessedish. So about two weeks are gonna be gone, correct? It'll start here in the middle of August, yeah, so we got full vacays and all that kind of starting, so we're gonna lose, and they'll be a lot, you know, the two college boys I got till middle of August, and you know, then I've got two that will face, depending on weather and all that. Still got some discussion as far as a couple, what we're gonna do, and how long we're gonna run, so that'll be.
I liked your reference of how many acres everything was, people do not realize that.
Yeah, it gets, it gets out of the way for me, you know, that while that pasture thing is, is a little misleading, you know, we don't have a lot to do with it, you know, that implies that number, but when you add in all the trails and the frontage of the trails and.
And even the cemetery itself.
Yep, 66 acres of the burial spaces.
Yeah.
So we whip it.
Yep.
But we tried, we tried to get out on the highway this week. It's an adventure, so holding some of that highway. I mean, that's back in, so it's got netting down on all of it, so we have to be careful that we don't end up all bald of.
Who's gonna pull those once everything gets established?
To be honest, everybody's kind of AWOL on communication, at least on hindsight.
You know, the DOT union.
But.
Are you ready to come up?
I don't know what their plans are.
Our side seems to.
They, they, they brought the big numbers over the top, and I figured if they could, I could raise things up, and so I tried to get a couple passes, just weeds, you know, are just. So Chris's guys came out, and they did intersections, so we had field of view and stuff like that back up. We tried to knock a little bit off just to, but we've got to go out and do concrete chunks and all that soon.
Well, and thank you for all your help and your crew's help on nuisances and on the park stuff, filling in when we had some shortages and I know the trees, I know the trees have been a challenge, and those planters are always a challenge, but it does help make the downtown look nice, so.
Switch to nuisance.
Yep.
So Justin had a good start on our nuisance properties today, with we pulled up on Market Street night, to be honest, I haven't been down there, but we'll be well, we'll be done tomorrow, we're done tomorrow with 305.
Awesome.
Hopefully we do another.
Talking about the houses.
The house.
Picking the demo. You'll be done with all five or just 305? 305 started today. Got it. Remember, today. Got it.
So the houses are obviously a big part of the nuisance, you know, picture. We've got the five houses that will be looked towards for demolition, we're trying to get in, get weeds knocked down, and utilities, I think all utilities are done now. Water will be done more, utility, we worked our schedule, and we're just going right ahead of them, captain it off ahead of time, so it's, it's just a process on everything. When I did that last, we had eight properties that we were working on as far as weeds and trash and that. As of
4 o'clock today?
19. So I, I understand and totally, you know, hear what you're saying, it's, it's a little different, you know, we've, we've got to get there, and I, I know we're not, so you know, I, I'm mowing the same properties I mowed 17 years ago. So, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of a deal, we just, we have to figure it all out again, so Lisa's given us the guidance, yes, as far as, you know, city positions and bridging the gap with city attorneys and things like that on what John and Justin and I need to go out and be doing, so it's kind of a three-headed monster, literally, that we're, we're trying to tackle the.
I'm off to the side, so.
Yeah, see, I hated to say four-headed, and then you said, oh, you called me a monster.
No, I admit.
See, everybody heard that HR. But, you know, I mean, John's doing the business, part of looking at the house, the structures, doing the notice, tagging, running everything through dispatch, so that there's timestamps and everything that way, so I mean, we're trying to do a process. Justin's gonna be taking on the citation, he's doing the animal side of life right now. And then I'm balling in the gaps of labor and chicken poops, so. Questions on nuisance, Brad?
Yeah, I don't have any questions for you, Brad, but I just do want to make a comment that, you know, in the absence of a nuisance officer, and then when Adam was ill, and you're filling in for him, I, I just really appreciate your extra devotion, and just, I can't thank you enough for, for you stepping up in the last few months, thank you.
I appreciate that, it is, I mean, Water Street, everybody, you know, my, again, my department's a big part of making it happen, but, you know, all the departments have stepped in.
No, I, I understand that as well, but you're the one standing in front of the podium, and I just wanted to recognize you for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Brad. All right. Number nine, discussion and direction on the creation of a cemetery oversight board. This is from a email request from Larry Branstadter, and I know he's spoken with several of us about this over the past couple of years.
So we're, have Larry kind of explained, and I obviously put all that information, I think, again, what I've explained to Larry is it's really about where this all fits in into our equation, based on the things that we're working on and things that you expect of us and where that can fit in, so that's where I didn't feel like it was my place to say yea or nay to the priority of it, and so I asked Larry to come here, and then the council can get some feedback.
Thank you very much, and thanks, Lisa, and Brad, too. This whole thought started coming to me several years ago when Faye and I bought our plot at the cemetery, we asked a question that I the response I got didn't appear that that question had been asked before. And the question was simply, what are the rules and regulations that I have to go by? And the, the superintendent of cemetery at the time said, well, what do you want to do? And I said, well, I want to know what I can and cannot do, you know, in my plot. And it became very apparent right off the bat that there were no written rules and regulations, you know, for, at the time, for it, and, and so I, I began thinking of several things then, and expanding my, my viewpoint, and I talked to the city administrator prior to Lisa, and she wasn't here long enough to, to kind of get into it. But then once Lisa came, then, I, you know, from my background, I said, I'm the city council, I'm gonna talk to the people first, not just all of a sudden spring it on you, you know, and, and so the first person I talked to was Brad, and, and to make sure that we were on board together, you know, with this whole idea, so that, that we weren't at odds over a situation. And then I talked to Lisa about this very same thing. And, and then did some research to find out what other cities are, what's the, what is state law as it pertains to to cemeteries, and sent that all to Lisa, and I think you've sent that on to the members of the city council. So now we're getting to the point where what I would ask you to do is to give some consideration to where you want to go, okay, and, and I have some thoughts and ideas, and then you can, not necessarily tonight, but at a time, you can say to Lisa, let's kind of start thinking about moving in that direction, and some details can be filled in, you know, as to how this is all going to look, okay? So I'm not, I'm, I'm thinking about things from a 30,000 foot viewpoint at this point, not the details and getting it all worked out. I have some, some handouts for you, and to kind of follow along here. And I.
Is, is this the same that's what's in our package?
No. This is different.
Okay.
We'll make sure we get it for you, Brian.
Thank you.
Brian, do you want me to hand it to the city administrator? Okay, all right, fine.
Thank you.
So the, the ordinance that deals with cemetery is Chapter 115 of the city code, and it details in very general terms, the operation of the cemetery, and what I have done in the packet that I handed you is that I have made a copy of that portion of the ordinance, so that you can see exactly what the ordinance says concerning that, okay? And Section 115.07 states, and I quote from here, that there are rules and regulations pertaining to hours of operation, rules governing internment, decoration of graves, fees of services, maintenance of lots, placement of markers and perpetual care, are, that's what it talks about. However, there are no rules specifically outlining what can and can't take place within the lot or the surrounding area of a cemetery. So it, it says, okay, these are what is going to go on, but they're, you know, where are they, you know, where are the rules, and, and that's not there. So I'm going to make a proposal to you, and you can mull it over, I don't expect you to make any decisions tonight, but to decide whether we want to go further this time. I would propose that a three-member Board of Directors, and Shenandoah has, when they call them, substance side, and, but you can determine any title, you know, that you would want from that, do the following, and the, the, there are three elements that I would see this occurring. The first is to create a 501(c)(3) nonprofit status for people can make tax-deductible deductions to the cemetery. And I think a good example of this, and a problem that arose from that, was a few years ago when people wanted to get an online presence and, and get a computer set up so that people can come in and at any time of day or night, and have put down the name of their loved one or their family, and decide where they want to go. And basically, the money came rolling in, it was very good, but the city had a problem. They didn't have any place, where does this money put, you know? And so they had to make a budget adjustment, you know, in order to do it, and they worked their way around it to get it all done. However, if there was a 501(c)(3) that this board would put together, similar to what the library does with the Library Foundation, why people could give money to improve our cemetery, and I think a, a great example of this might be when the Questers were there, and they were redoing the brick pillars there in the front. They, they paid for that, but if an individual wanted to do that, where would that money go, you know? And so in this case, if there was a 501(c)(3), they could donate it to that and, and get it all done, and it would make it easier for the city. So that would be the first thing. The second thing is to promote the cemetery and market to those who come to visit. I, I remember being at a cemetery in Nebraska, so. Um, I, I remember being at a cemetery in Nebraska several years ago. Where, uh, my parents are interned. And, uh, I went up there on Memorial Day and there were three or four people standing out with. With, uh, giving me a leaflet, you know, a pamphlet, uh, a trifold, so to speak. And they said, hey, you know, here's something you can learn about our cemetery and, and, uh, and I, they were marketing it. They were marketing the, you know, the beauty of that cemetery and we have a lot to market in our cemetery too, you know, it's. As, uh, as we've always learned in the past couple of years, when Questers has done their, um, their, uh. Uh, program up there with people standing, talking about that, the cemetery is history. And, uh, and it's a, a point where history can, of those people can come out. So, um. So I think that, uh, there's a marketing job that can be done and I can see the cemetery. Board or committee or whatever you want to call it, being involved in that. The third thing is to, uh, and create recommendations to the city council. Uh, pertaining to the rules and regulations governing the operation of the cemetery. And rules pertaining to what lot owners can and do to enhance their experience. And what they will not be allowed to do. Okay. Because rules say this is what you can do. But on the other side, it says what you can do as well. Okay. The, the council then, uh, these rules would come before the city council if that's what you approved, if that's what you wanted. And then you could approve those rules, regulations, you know, that the, the, this group, however, with a group of three. Would come up with the, the recommendations and then bring them to the city council. But if you want this group to make those rules and regs, that would be your purview or your call too. Okay? Uh, so, um, if I'd like to say if the council sees fit, the creation of the rules and regs could be delegated to the board. Uh, that's your call. Okay? Uh, so then also. Uh, the, uh, this, uh, committee would make, uh, annual recommendations to the city administrator and to the council. Concerning work to be accomplished in the ensuing fiscal year and enhancement of the property. Now, I think that that would certainly be done in, or in, uh, uh, with Brad. And, uh, one of the things that I have in here is that I think Brad would be, could be an ex officio member of the, of the board. Just like, uh, Adam is to the park board, you know, he's, he's there. Talking to them, explaining to them, educating them, uh, you know, giving his point of view so that, that, um. That's happening. Uh, also, um, so what would this city, the cemetery board not do? Uh, like I said, the city employee who is designated as the cemetery superintendent would be an official member. Would report directly to the city administrator and we'd be responsible to the city administrator. So they would not have to report to this particular board. Okay. Um, that's, they're still reporting to. To the, the city administrator. Um, the city council, or, sorry, excuse me, um. Then, uh, the cemetery board would not have any direct supervisory role as it pertains to the cemetery superintendent or any of the employees. So that, that would all be, um, with, uh, the city administrator and not with this particular board. Okay? And then any additional restrictions, um, as far as setting the, the budget. I think the city council would still be responsible for setting the budget for the operation of the cemetery. That would not be a part of this particular board. That way the city, you know, but however, this board might make recommendations, but it would be the city, uh, or the city councils. And the city administrator's role to decide whether they wanted to go along with those recommendations or not. So, you know, as I'm not taking any power away from the city administrator, not power away from the city council. But we're certainly going to expand, I think, uh, the number of, of ideas and thoughts that come in. Over the past several years, you know, there have been some changes that have happened physically into the, into the cemetery. A lot of trees have blown down and things of that nature. And I think that a cemetery board made of three people can certainly do a lot. To, uh, try to move things, you know, or collect money for it or whatever it might be to help in those regards. So that's the vision that, that I want to, uh, offer you. And, uh, as, as you received in, in your email from Lisa. And I really appreciate the cooperation Lisa has given as we've talked through this. Um, but, um, uh, there are cities all over the state of Iowa, you know, that have a citizen board. That, uh, works to, to govern the, um, uh, cemeteries and I included all of those. And what they're doing, what some city ordinances and other communities are all about. Any questions?
Thank you for all your work on this, Larry.
Thank you.
We'll discuss it and entertain.
Talk it over, see if you want to, uh, proceed. And if so, I'd be happy to be a part of it. Uh, by the way, uh, I do not want to be one of those three members on the board. Not what I'm, I'm here to, to do. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Larry. All right. Number ten is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting of. July seventh, twenty twenty five liquor licenses for Williams Recreational Parlour. This is our annual. Liquor license and also the July twenty first. Twenty twenty five claims, which also include the extra sheet that, that Ashley and Lisa left for you. Entertain a motion to approve. Bradley?
One second.
Right off. Any discussion? Roll call. Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Debrin?
Yeah.
Bradley?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Number eleven is resolution twenty twenty five dash eighty four to declare vehicles, mowers, equipment surplus. Basically, this is a way for us to. Participate in Bertrand's auction in August. To move some of these items and get some additional revenue coming in for things that we're not necessarily using. And to do it locally is what Lisa's recommendation would be. Through Bertrand.
I need to approve that. Okay, Lester?
So none of these mowers are, were, are no good at all? It always seems like by purchasing a new mower, we need an extra mower somewhere. They're just shot?
Yeah, they're pretty much shot.
Okay, just no go. All right.
Both mine and I have on the list is two thousand to put it in just to make them run.
Okay, so, yeah.
Somebody can, you know.
I'll second it so we can talk about it.
Okay, okay. So Lester and Bill's now discussion?
So, you know, it's, it's my opinion if the, if the department heads put the stuff out there that it's no longer of use to them. No longer economically feasible to repair it. I think we just need to sell it.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, but it just always seems like we're needing a new mower.
Because we.
Well, yeah, our stuff gets, our stuff gets used.
It gets abused.
Well, it, it's not that it gets abused, Adam, it gets used. And, you know, and, and that's why, you know, that's why we have to replace it on a continuing basis. All of our, everything we have gets used. The stuff that we don't have to replace is stuff we shouldn't even have.
Right. I agree.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. Roll call. Lester?
Yes.
Debrin?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number twelve is resolution twenty twenty five dash eighty five to hire and set the salary for Ben Lundgren as the M C D C executive director.
So, so I have a question about this before we even do any kind of resolution. I, I didn't realize that this was even part of our, our, uh, jurisdiction. I thought this was strictly on. M C D C to do the hiring of their directors and personnel. We don't, I don't remember doing it in the past.
We didn't in the past, but we did enter a contract with the city to have the new executive director as a city employee for the purpose of benefits. And so because of that, we do have to pass it by resolution from the city council because he will be an employee by benefits, by reason of benefits. M C D C will reimburse the salary, um, and the city's providing the benefits.
I'll, I'll make that motion. I will make that motion.
I was gonna say, isn't that part of the city's donation to?
The benefit side, yes.
Benefit side of it as part to M C D C.
But we can't, but we can't put someone on our benefits if they're not our.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, we have to remember that economic development is critical to the city and we, working together as an employee, they will, um. Need to reward a lot of the benefits from the economic director. So I will second the motion.
Okay, Bills and Bradley, roll call. Debrin?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
I'll abstain since. I signed the contract.
I don't feel like.
It probably wouldn't matter, but I mean. I have before. Just being president of the organization.
Lester?
Yes.
Probably doesn't matter.
Okay.
And Ben is here, so.
Yes, Ben is here.
Good luck now, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Just made it.
We're excited to have Ben.
August, is it eleventh when you start?
Yeah, August eleventh. So it won't be long.
Number thirteen is discussion on vacating the right of ways. Page forty one.
We've had a couple of requests, um, and my most simple answer is, I don't like to just be a no person, but. Almost always there's little reason to. Agree to vacate right of way when it comes to the public purpose. Like obviously sometimes there's utilities and in a couple of these cases, there's not. Um, you know, when you kind of go through the process of why are you doing this? It should not be for private gain. It should not be because somebody made an error. And in the first case, um. Dan Bullington has this property listed. He was not able to be here tonight, so he is planning on coming in two weeks. Um, but when you look at it, like somebody allowed or someone did without permission, putting a building on our property. And so I think the slippery slope is if we start saying that. Whenever we find out that you put your building on our property, that we're just going to sell it to you. It's not a good idea because all it really does is indirectly encourage people to make mistakes. Kind of like. You know, we had a situation with a no building permit and oops, I have something in the wrong spot and we had to say you have to fix it. Even though that was a difficult conversation. Um, so overall, it feels uncomfortable when we're not really using it and it's not an improved right of way to say no. Uh, but overall, I don't like saying yes to that because where do you draw the line? It's super. Um, it's not really about the time, but. As an example, you have to have a legal description even to be able to put an ad in the paper. So who's paying for the survey? To be able to say, this is how you describe it. And then you have to put ads in the paper and you have to go through public hearings and notify everybody and have this process. Um, and so are you asking for money upfront before someone even buys it? Or are you risking that you go through this process and expend a lot of city money on top of? They should have to pay for something because there's a serious gain to the property owner who gets it. And then typically you vacate the whole thing. So what happens to the people on the other side? You know, do they want it? Do they care? Are you then all of a sudden giving the whole thing if they don't want it? So it becomes a pretty complicated conversation. Brad was also, um, asked recently by somebody who in, in this case was. Uh, a little bit more improved than this one is. Uh, I didn't put that one in there, but. Somebody owns on both sides of it and they're like, oh, like my property would be a lot better if you just give this to me. And it's like, you know, there's trees growing in and. I think Brad, in that case, there was no alleys, right? Or no. Buildings to the alley.
No buildings.
Right? So it wasn't like people are using it, but it becomes the same thing. Like where do we draw the line to say we're just going to continue to do this, create all this. Work for ourselves and then what's the fair price for people to buy it for? And so, um, kind of just giving you, I guess, a heads up today since Dan can't be here. Uh, obviously people are not going to buy. That lot knowing that part of your building is on city property. And so. Um, you know, there was a bit of a rush. In terms of someone had cash that needed to get rid of that before there's capital gain timeframes. And so it all just kind of becomes this like, what can we do? And I'm like, well, I certainly can't promise you anything before you have this deadline, but I don't know if the council has an opinion. Um, about it, but overall, I don't think any of us at the staff level are supportive of getting rid of it. Even in the cases of us not really using it. It's just super complicated.
You know, we've, we've, uh, we've vacated right of ways in the past. Uh, for things that made sense. Like I, I have an example in my brain where. People own property on both sides of our right of way and the right of way dead ended into the river. So there would, there would have really no valid argument for not doing that. Uh, but in this case, I see what you're talking about there. I, I understand what you're talking about. So.
But, but I think. Sorry, are we done?
I, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of the old saying of better to ask forgiveness than permission. I, I believe in permission.
So the other thing, like you say that in that case, I think that the staff brought that up. So you gave away land that was along the river. But if we ever have a goal of cleaning up the creek or the river, you just gave up one of our few spot, spots of access to it. So it may have felt at that time. Like there wasn't a value there, but as we talk about cleaning up the creek, ha- creek, having access to the creek. If we have those occasions where we have our own access to like go in, get stuff out that way, like how are you hauling things out? That's an example of, I think that actually came up as. Maybe it wasn't a good idea to do that.
I, I, I understand that there's, that there's, uh, ins and outs to, to all situations and I, I get that, but. I just want to, all, all I wanted to say was I, I don't know that it's realistic to say we're never gonna. Uh, give up a right of way or an easement, but, but I think that it, the cases that it would be feasible are few and far between. I would agree with that.
And going back to that, I didn't do any research on that, but again, like who paid for the cost of all that?
Well, that would have to be on the person asking for release of the easement or the right of way. Wouldn't be on the city to pay for those costs.
I don't think that's how.
But I don't think that's what happened, Brian.
No, we paid for it.
Well.
We paid for it.
So that's the whole thing is like, you know, when I was kind of talking through with Danny, like, okay, well, do I need to give you money upfront? And I'm like. Well, that feels weird too. Right? So like you get through this whole sense and you say, okay, the survey was the legal attorney, like who's. You know, who's drafting the, the documents, who's doing all of that? So.
Well, and I'm aware we've, we have people in the community that have been mowing, right, you know, some of our right of way and they've. Parked their own equipment on it and kind of use it as their own road area. Um, and I think they feel that they've done us a service and that we owe them something. So. I know there's just been things done in the past that aren't necessarily. I think we need to have a, a, a plan, I guess, and then be as consistent as possible.
Well, I think, you know, right of way is right of way and easement is easement. And if people are violating that, we need to enforce those. You know, giving them up and, and signing them over is one thing, but enforcing our easements and our right of ways, that's a completely different issue. And that's something that's not even. I mean, that's not an option.
But again, like people, people say that about like taking care of things, but all of us that live on a street mow right of way.
Yep.
Every one of us. If you have a sidewalk, you mow between the curb and the sidewalk. If you have no sidewalk. Your property line does not go to the curb and the street never starts there. So everybody. By code is expected to mow and maintain.
Yeah, that's not what I was, I wasn't referring to that. I was talking about people that are actually violating. The easements and right of ways by either building in them or parking in them illegally, all the above. That's, I wasn't talking about maintaining them. That's definitely on the people in those properties. Absolutely.
No, I, I was not referencing you. The mayor said people think we owe them something when they've been taking care.
I get it. Yeah, I get it.
So when it's like a full right of way, that's no road, obviously it's a little bit different. Than when you have curb.
That's the question I'm asking. I'm, I want to ask here's, I'm looking at this lot here. It looks like there's. An alley, like two alleys.
You're talking about South First Street?
Yeah, that's, that's where I don't hear that mark.
Yeah, so what it is, is like, it's a right of way that nobody ever improved on our side, but people have taken advantage of it as driveways.
Yeah, that's the way I'm looking.
So there's a landscaping business to the east, to the right-hand side. So that, there's a landscaping business to the east, to the right hand side of your page, so they access in there. So people have just sort of taken over the right of way and used it as private driveways.
It would have been a different scenario when the railroads were.
Yeah, because to the south of it is railroad, which I didn't realize that. So that kind of wonky piece uh, that ends in not
Old Missley, what is it?
Oh, I see. The one that own, ends in three thousand, you can't click on it, but if you were on Beacon and you click, it's like a long skinny piece and then kind of goes like that and like down and then a skinny piece and comes back, that's all railroad right of way.
So this is Rogers Plumbing and Heating, right?
Yes.
Rogers is itself.
Right there.
Yeah, that's Rogers right there.
So I know what this is.
How'd they get pie cut?
Fun facts of the past.
Yeah, tha- that just doesn't seem right there.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Well, it's, starts off pretty good, like rectangle, rectangle. Then we get a pie chunk in there.
So it's the main, like the thing on the south, that's kind of like an L shape, that's a building. And then I think the other ones are like vehicles and semis and things like that. So.
So, so what's your recommendation, Lisa?
We just have the.
I think, you know, he, he can come to the meeting. I don't wanna deny him the right to come, but I, I just it's a super slipper slip if we say every time somebody builds on our right of way that we're gonna
Right.
Give it up, even at a cost. And the like, when you have land in between, like, you know, again, like the most perfect world is you go down the middle and everybody gets it to the two sides. And they should have to pay for it. So then say you have like a strip that's like three properties deep and then you have six people and what if these four agree and these two don't and so it's oftentimes just better to leave alone. And we, that's been our message. Obviously, a lot of times when they're just coming forward, like, hey, can I buy this? No. The one that the mayor's talking about, it's all good till it's not. So nobody addressed that someone was in our right of way with a driveway. And then someone bought the property next door and they're like, hey, like, why do these people have this driveway here? And I never knew about it. So then I call them and they're like, oh, well, somebody in the past told me it was okay. Like, oh, it isn't.
So when they go to sell it.
I don't think they're gonna be able to sell. They're either gonna have to retain it, they're gonna have to move that building. Is that just, that's not a building Chris or Brad, that little building that's into the right of way? Is it just on a slab?
No, I went down like that, it's like it's got a foundation pour under it.
That little.
It was affordable at one point.
Yeah, that's.
It's got, it's got.
It's on foundation.
Oh, you put a foundation on it now?
Yeah.
Is that Jo- is that Jody Miller?
Well.
Who's that?
Yes.
Okay. But that, yeah, that's that rental area.
Oh, that sounds.
Like a little office, right?
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what it's, what's called now.
So with regard to this discussion, do you want an opinion of all the council members on this topic? Or?
I mean, I guess you can either do that, you can think about it. He still wants to come because he couldn't come tonight. He kind of made it seem urgent, so then I put it on. I sent him the packet. He's like, oh, I can't come, I'm out of town. So I said, well, he said, what about next Monday? I'm like, well, we're not having a special meeting about this, so you have to wait two weeks.
But he has that for sale.
Yeah, that property is for sale.
So, so, so I, 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 I just have a question on this. So I know that, I know the current owner. Uh, but he bought it from somebody else in the condition that it's in. So how does that work out? I mean, what, I mean, that's kind of a, that gets kind of messy, doesn't it?
Well, isn't there a chain link fence? That goes along that alley.
Yeah, yeah, and it would be on our property, yeah. I'm just, I'm just saying that that, I know the property was purchased like it sits right now and those, those structures were there when when the current owner purchased it. I think it was purchased on a land contract and I'm not really sure how that all equates out, but not, I, I don't, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I don't know why anybody would have done that. There's plenty of room to do differently.
Ask ourselves that every day, Brian.
Yeah.
I'm aware, I'm aware.
Do you all wanna think about it?
Never been able to even put up a chain link fence from there. I mean, things were not done.
I mean, I'm assuming that building is super old.
It's pretty.
It's all pretty old, yep. It's all pretty old.
I mean, the current owners bought it three, almost and a half years ago. Maybe, no, maybe seventeen and then they transferred it between themselves and a trust.
Yeah.
So they've probably owned it for like eight years.
That sounds right.
I don't know. It's difficult. I feel like I have, this happened to me a lot. Like people are like, well, it was always fine before.
No, I, all, all I, all I'm saying is the current, the current owner and I know that, that it really doesn't, you know, uh, absolve you from responsibility, but the current owner had nothing to do with those buildings being where they are.
Right, so like the other thing as an example is they allowed a building to be built right between two properties.
Yeah.
Like the one that's between the two sides.
Yeah.
So like I just had building permits denied from people that just wanted to put up a little shed where they owned three parcels and I said, no. And they had been given a building permit a year ago for another little shed on the same thing where they cross over a property line. And these are all the things that like
Yep.
I, I don't know what to say. It's just people either not paying attention, it's kind of good old just the way it always was. People were allowed to do stuff like that. Um, you know, and, and when we discussed it at the staff meeting, you know, one of the things was is then like if our right of way is being given up, what about the railroad? So would they be able to go to the railroad and say, are you willing to give up your right of way?
I know the railroad's been approached on that particular piece of ground over and over again, and they are not.
Right, but the point is, so there's like that, you know, they don't, and so should we? I would say no. And it's not our fault. You have to remember that. Like, and when you, when you look at why you do this, you should not be giving up public land for the benefit of someone.
I guess, I, 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 I understand that. I guess, I guess my, my question is uh, what, what does that leave? I mean, where do, where does the owner go from here? And so what, what does that put on him? Uh, I mean, and that's, that's blindsiding this person because once again, they had nothing to do with the placement.
Take those buildings down that are in the right of way.
That's, that's the only option, huh?
Yeah, I would think so.
Well, it's, it's just that one.
They just have to take the front of that down or the building.
Yeah.
Or they don't get to sell it right now.
Well, I, I think those are, are trace.
Yeah, well, one, the white one in one foundation, the ones like that, yeah.
It's the building. I think these are just movable.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, but the, I believe there's a chain link fence on that backside there too.
There is, it would have to come down.
And, yeah, and you know, that building is, that building is a modular building for sure.
Building is, I think the official address is one oh six. But the parcel for the issue is one hundred. So when you go look at it, like the building that, that I think is in question. Brad, is this the building that's the issue?
Yeah.
Chris.
And that's just a.
So this deal is what's poking onto our land.
Yeah. That would be easy to get rid of because that's just a ridge. They put tables.
And there's your chain link fence. You can see it, but it's behind, so maybe it's right on the end. You see it right back here?
I would say they.
So again, like I know it stinks, Brian, but you know, my first month here, I had to say to somebody who was building a house.
I, I'm, I'm, I hear what you're saying. I, in my brain though, I'm thinking that, that I am gonna cause a person to lose value in his property when it's something that he well, had no cause in. And
So why?
I, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around that. I understand every point that you've made, I unders, I get where you're coming from and I understand the other side of that argument. I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around it. That's all I'm thinking out loud, so let me do that, please.
I think it's the due diligence that people fail to have made, like, people don't do clear, like they don't do title searches. They don't have people.
No, uh, once, I'm, I'm aware and, and you know what, and I'm, I had a similar situation with a property that I inherited. I didn't do a title search and, you know, I had some issues down the road, so I understand totally. I, I get that that's on the responsibility of the person that's, you know, buyer beware. I get all that, so.
Would it also be in their best interest to make those two parcels one?
Well, if it were me, you wouldn't be allowed to do that. Like I've had to tell three people, you may not do what you wanna do unless you combine it. And it's super easy if they are um, and I've always connected those three with the county. You know, via email to say, if you wanna do this, you have to get rid of this property line because you're going over a property line and there's no building over property lines. And people are like, oh, but it's all by the same people. But the county will do it super easy. Like you don't have to incur a survey as long as you have them titled to the exact same names. Like there can't be a middle initial in one case and not in the other. But it's literally just a paperwork thing. There's no cost to people. So yeah, that should be done, but that doesn't change the situation.
Yeah.
I don't even, how would, how, so speaking of the county and, and this is maybe a little segue, but how do, how do they even uh, calculate the taxes on that where you've got a building that's partially on one and partially on another?
I mean, in the perfect world, you would say uh, you would say the building is worth a hundred thousand and based on where the property line is, it's a forty five, fifty five. And so fifty five thousand is going to this parcel and forty five is going to the other.
Do we know anybody, do we know who owns the lot to the east?
Uh, to the east of the road? That's not a road?
East of the.
Yeah.
It's healthy.
Healthy turf.
Turf, healthy turf.
Think, I mean what can you call a healthy turf? Because he, he couldn't buy that little section there.
But that's.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that doesn't get him out of the easement, Adam. He's still in our easement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
So and again, my point of all this is that remember, like when you vacate right of way, you're supposed to go down the middle. And then you give half and half. You can't just say like, okay, people on the west, you can have the whole thing. Like that's the most proper way to do it. So now you suck in the landscaping people to say, are you willing to pay for half of all this cost that's related to that? And are you gonna you can't just have this land for free. So it should be fair market value and the cost of it.
And, and if they, if, but if that were to happen, that would eliminate that part of the issue. But then they'd still have to do a new survey and do all that lot into one, correct?
Yes.
So. Well, there would be three lots to the problematic people, because they have two right now, plus the third piece that they want.
Yeah, right, right, right. But it would require a new survey on the entire property.
This is a small building. There's nothing here that they.
It's not like their main.
It's new, it's not a big building, so, because I've seen it. I mean, I loaded changes up there, so.
I've looked at it.
I looked at it for the animal shelter.
And again, that's not the city's fault.
No.
No, and I understand it might not be theirs, but it's not our fault.
And to your point of bringing this up. What you didn't know in the past, you didn't know, now you know, so how do you not do the right thing? And take care of it the way it should be. I mean, you only know what you know. And now I know more. So.
And it's hard to go back. Like I can't go back and say, like, did somebody give them a building permit? Like
Well, like.
I have.
Even planning zoning, you know, I wasn't aware of.
I think we just have to do right.
You couldn't build if you have three parcels, you couldn't build on
Across them.
On the cross the line. I didn't know you had to go get and have them combined.
There's a lot of that and it just.
There's a lot of it.
Yeah.
But you know, when you're literally interpreting the code, like you wouldn't say if it was two pieces, like, hey, these two people are gonna get together and build a property together. You would be like, no, they have to be. Um.
I say we go to it right from here forward. That would be my suggestion.
I agree.
So I'm gonna let them know we're leaning towards that, sorry, we're not doing this, but he's welcome to come to the next meeting, you know, at least.
I mean, that's gonna be like a huge building that he has to move. He could probably put it on a skid thing and move it back. I mean.
Did you say there's walls, Bradley? Actual walls. So maybe not, but again it's not trying to be insensitive, but to say we're gonna go through a process when we represent the public side of nature.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. He, he bought that way, you're right, but.
It's unfortunate. I think we have to do the right thing.
It's a bigger property. He's got a big franchise there too.
Yep. Okay, are we done with this topic? All right, moving on. Number fourteen, resolution twenty twenty five dash eighty nine. This is purchase and lease of water and sewer department backdoor truck. And we do have two bids in the packets and I don't know, is Tom on the phone or?
He's actually here.
Oh.
Yeah.
Did you, do you want anybody to come forward and talk about this?
I'd say Clint should come up first and then if you guys have questions.
You wanna talk about it? I think that it's not critical that we replace it right now, but at the same time, you've got a good opportunity here. And it'll take a little while.
Hard work is on that, um. Most time with this type of equipment, if you're not in about a ten year cycle, you start losing a lot of value in the truck. Um, our truck was an extra work we did till last year, put about forty thousand into it to get it back up in good condition. It will still work for quite a long time, but yet the company's out there like Tom and the other company, they, they recognize the value we put into it. So they're throwing that back into the resale value, pretty much giving our money back into that. Um, in a normal municipality, you know, I might sit there and think we might wanna push this truck another two to three years, things like that, but with city right of way, we hydro excavate with it. This truck works way harder than any vehicle I've ever worked around. That truck's out almost every day. And it's vital, the seven weeks we were down last year. Um, if we didn't have Colton Erickson, who I worked with, he had pretty much donated his truck to us. Or had there, we had sewer balls coming in, it wasn't for him, we'd be fifty to seventy thousand dollars out of our pocket running equipment to get the job done. We got done, the golden did for us because we put it in the heated shop for us, maybe keep this truck heated for the winter. So it's kind of a, a give and take. Um, when I kind of came on, it was one of, that was one of my first tools is I knew that we need to get into like a ten year cycle. We kind of talked about it when I came on, not saying that was what it's there. Um, through some conversations with Lisa, we just kind of threw some viewers out there. Um, I reached out to Tom, I reached out to a few other people that I dealt with and they just started bringing some demos in. And uh, we just thought we'd throw some numbers out and see where we're at at this point. Um, Tom's really come in with a very, very aggressive package for us, um, willing to work, that you have a lease program uh, for different stuff where we won't even pay for it. The first payment's not even due for twelve months if we go that way. Um, so we get to play with it for a year. Um, but yeah, they've come, uh, one of the trucks he brought down, we actually went and we hired a hole with that truck while I was here on demo. So we gotta see actually how that truck worked. Um, that truck we could have tomorrow, it's built, ready to go. You could probably drive it down tomorrow there, but it had three hundred seventy horse motor. We'd like to go to a four fifty horse. Um, after we've done the research on that, the four fifty horse gets better fuel mileage. It's, it's a more efficient truck and it's got the power to get around our hills and things like that. Um, so uh, I was really in the fact that we were probably in that seventy, eighty thousand dollar trade in range and they came in at a hundred and forty for trade in. So, um, depending on what you guys think, I mean, we'll go either way, but any year, we're gonna lose seventy, eighty thousand dollars with the trade in value, um, pushing it off. Um, so it's, it's a vital piece of equipment and we're in a world of hurt as the water side and the wastewater side use that daily. And if it finally goes down, um, that's a huge insurance piece that we don't have. Um.
When was the last?
Two thousand fifteen, it's, it's ten years old, so.
So the plan, so, uh, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just, and you say that that's a normal lifespan, it's ten years for these vehicles.
To get the best bang for your buck in trade in values right at that ten year mark. Um, and Tom's here talking, speak to that. He, he deals and sells them all the time. He knows right where they're at. We have a good truck. It's, it's the most money we're ever gonna get out of it is right now. Um, it's just we're in that, that perfect window for them. But yeah, they're about a ten year cycle. If you try to push them out from a ten year cycle, in the next two to three years, the odds are we can put more maintenance into it than what we're trying to save, so.
So, so I'm looking at that, that's that's like a thirty to thirty five thousand dollar a year investment for us based on the numbers that I'm looking at here. If we get certain amount of trade, it's costing us basically three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace this, correct?
Real close, yeah.
Five hundred, I thought.
Yeah.
Well, but, but when you take the, the four, the hundred and forty thousand we're getting for our other equipment. Four thirty nine, right? Okay, so that works out to be forty, forty, forty five thousand dollars a year.
Yep, our forty.
So if we were to order it now, if the council ordered to approve it tonight, we wouldn't get it till the end of the year and then the twelve months starts then.
Yep, you might as well start up with the.
Right, so basically we wouldn't be making any payment until December of twenty six. So nothing coming out of this fiscal year.[1740.61]
Did we budget for any of this? Did we budget for any of this in the past?
That's what I'm saying, like nothing's in this budget.
Okay.
Yeah. This will be a year out.
Next year's budget would be the first payment. Water has. Higher reserves, sewer basically doesn't have hardly any reserve. So the plan would be the first two payments in fiscal twenty-seven. And twenty-eight would come out of water. Again, we'd be in the heat of like either borrowing money or doing something different with sewer, sewer rates, things like that. And so then we could have the last payment come out of sewer. So it'd be like two thirty.
Yeah, so, so Clint, I, I, I mean, I'm just assuming that this truck we have now is, is turning into a maintenance nightmare for you. Is that correct?
No, it's not a complete maintenance nightmare. Um, it was last year, we went through. And got a lot of stuff back up speed. So the truck is in great shape and it's gonna work, but it's just, we're at that age, we just never know. You never know if, you know, we're going out to go one day and now it's another forty thousand dollar charge and we're down for seven weeks. It's uh. In my mind, at the ten-year mark, we're kind of buying insurance by getting something new and going again. It's just a little bit of an insurance policy. Get that warranty back, uh, make sure everything works right. And we're just. You're just starting to roll the dice after ten years, you know?
Yeah, I, I get it. I get it. And you know, for all the work that you guys do with this. You know, forty, forty-five thousand a year to own that piece of equipment doesn't seem like a lot of money for what it does.
No, you, you couldn't run it for what we do, so.
And I think like, there's kind of two different philosophies amongst different cities. Like sometimes it's. Run everything into the ground and never get a dime back out of it and hold on for dear life and not know when you need to replace it. Or there is the more aggressive side of. Not waiting forever and not, you know, like we're not trying to say like every two years, get us a new vector truck, but. Um, by doing it sooner, you know, a hundred and forty is, I think all of us felt.
That's a different company.
I, I, I don't agree with the. Yeah, I don't agree with the policy of waiting until it's emergency to get something done because then you don't have the equipment to fix something that needs to be fixed then.
And something they've got now with these trucks now, it's benefit for us too, because we work a lot of times, you know, in the winter, we're still out there. These new trucks and this one that's been out, it has an enclosure over the pumps and everything like that. So they're, they're gonna be heated while they're out there. So the chance of them freezing up while we're out there and breaking lines is a lot less than what it was, um, before. If we had to go out and hydro something in the middle of winter or we had to. Go jet something, you gotta hook your recirc up, get that pump going and get that water moving and get there be as fast as you can before. Every little elbow starts to freeze and then now your truck's back in the shop, put on out for two to three hours to go out and try to do it again and. Um, this eliminates a lot of the, the technology that's coming out in these vehicles now is. It's making things easier for us to get the job done, especially in the hard things.
Yeah, that's good to know. So do you have any idea what this, the one that we're, that we would be trading in was what we paid for it initially?
Uh, I don't know for sure, but I know it was up for a four hundred.
Okay.
Do you, do you, do you remember Denise with this, with the one that we just, that we have now? What if we paid for it? In fifteen?
It was, it was.
She remembers what it was.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure it was. I mean, I know it was way up there.
What, what's the lease agreement look like?
Uh, it's in the.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet on different ones.
So I just proposed, like, I don't think we should go out too far. But because we didn't budget for it, we don't wanna make a payment this year or two, so anyway, so I proposed. At five point six five percent through this Huntington Company that sewer equipment. Um. And Atlas work with, it would be two payments, or I'm sorry, um. Two payments after the twelve months.
Does this come from Minneapolis or Minnesota?
It's coming out of Johnston, AP area.
Okay, so it's no tariffs or anything involved, right? Okay.
So we technically add and make three payments. One is basically like, like twelve months of interest free. Cause I just, you know, like, we already have some issues with reserves and other funds. You know, and I don't think that we want to like spend it all down just because we have it. So I think better to spread it out over.
Good.
What essentially is three years after the year we just started.
And then there's also that supply and demand that you never know that too.
So if the council is supportive, I prepared, uh, the resolution and we would recommend to proceed with the purchase.
I'm motion to approve the resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-nine to purchase and lease, um. The vector.
Sewer cleaning truck.
Is it not back?
Backers, you have a.
That's the other one.
Okay, it's like saying Kleenex. Yes, tissue or Kleenex.
For the bigger. This for the.
Yeah, this, this is for armor equipments.
Yeah.
What sewer equipment.
This for the four fifty.
Bigger engine.
Yeah, all right. So I got a Bradley and did piping, he bring, did you? Second, Janice Lester, okay? Any further discussion? Roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here, Tom. Thank you. Clint, all right. Resolute number fifteen is re- ordinance twenty-two-five dash eleven. This is our third and final reading for the nuisance grass and weeds. This is just to make it simpler on our end. So that it's more enforceable as well.
Move to approve the third and final reading.
Right off. Do a second.
I'll second.
Lester. Any discussion?
Thought we're gonna. Charge higher for the, we have a seventy-five dollar.
That's the next one now.
That's such.
That, the next one is, is setting the B.
Okay.
This is the ordinance. The next one is, yep.
Thank you.
All right, roll call. Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
All right, number sixteen is resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-six. This is the administrative fee for the nuisance abatement invoices.
So, I'm not sure, I don't know that we for sure discussed an amount. They're gonna get a bill for whatever it costs us. Like if we're going out there and mow. There's three guys there for two hours trimming trees and mowing and blowing everything back, which we had one today that. According that, I don't know how long the guys were there, but it was a while. So they're gonna get a bill of so much per hour. And then they're also gonna get the seventy-five dollars. So even if it's like an easy mow. And it's, you know, a seventy-five dollar mow job, the bill's gonna be one fifty. And every time we come and mow, it's gonna be time. Material and mow, like super unattractive. So the seventy-five is just kind of the paperwork side. We can also like. Put whatever, but my whole point was it can't be attractive to think like, oh, I'm not gonna hire arms. I'm gonna. Just let the city go do it. Like it needs to be an ugly number. That covers our costs. And if you look at how much goes into just the administrative side of getting to the point. Of actually doing the mowing that we've been billing, like it's probably, uh, not such. I don't know. You know, it's go out there, take a call, drive past it, do the tag. Go back forty-eight hours later, get everything, you know, and then on the backside, it's like creating the invoice, mailing it out, following up if they don't pay, getting it on the tax bill.
Oh, easily.
So.
So all we're approving is the administrative fee, correct?
Yeah, well, the whole resolution says we're charging you for whatever labor and equipment. Costs to do any of these nuisances, like in this case, Brad, plus that we have to, yeah. So it's kind of like the billing. Let's call it or.
Okay.
Do we, do we go in there, rake up the grasses down, or do we just, just knock down the grass?
No, like we mowed legit today.
Mowed and.
There's like grass clippings and then we blew it all back and there's branches and craft that we all pulled out. I mean, we're not doing it like.
Professional, no, we're just trying to get the.
Right, it's so that it's not six inches.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we're bailing it up for people too.
Um, I don't, like today, we're not doing it that extreme. Like it's still being blown, you know, it's not the most beautiful, but we're not moving it all crazy and just hacking it down.
You know, seventy-five dollars is, is a cheap administrative fee for a nuisance ticket. You go to some cities that charge you two hundred fifty, five hundred dollars for these kind of tickets.
And again, this is not a citation. If we have to go to a citation. It's gonna be a lot bigger. This is saying we're like.
No, I'm, I'm with you. I'm talking about administrative fees. I get it.
Okay, right. So you could do more if you want to. I wouldn't go less. If you wanna do a hundred dollars, you can do that, whatever you guys.
I'll go with your recommendation on that. I mean, you know what it costs you to do this stuff.
So are you going to make a motion so that we can discuss if anybody wants to do something different?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Brian Bills is making the motion for the seventy-five. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, do we have any further discussion? All right, roll call. Lester?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
All right, number seventeen, resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-seven. This is Bancroft and Webster School subdivision plats.
I thought we already did this. I thought we already did this.
We did, we talked about it, but we didn't actually.
They had never surveyed it and gotten it ready for the lots. We talked about just. Being supportive, they took the structures down.
I see, I see.
And then we had to wait for them to get the survey done. So if you look at it, uh, and planning and zoning met today and recommending approval. They have their meeting at eight thirty this morning. So Bancroft.
We, but we basically already agreed to this, correct?
I guess, but not technically.
Yeah, not formally.
Nothing new.
I, I'm aware, okay, I just, but, but nothing's changed to what we already said, yes, we're good with.
Right, what we talked about the last time was that they had hoped to get five lots out of Bancroft.
Right.
And in order to get five, we had to change the code and that code hasn't been changed. So in order to stay compliant with the current code, they have to have four there. And then Webster can be five.
Okay.
So you can do a motion to approve both of these.
I make the motion to approve both of the subdivision plats.
All right. Right off. Have a second.
I'll second.
Bradley, do I have any further discussion? Roll call. He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
I have to say that it's going to be very nice for our neighborhood. When I walk away from my house and my.
Oh, yeah.
To have.
Both neighborhoods.
There and finally, after years of sitting empty, it's been really a nice to see that, uh, down.
Yeah, both neighborhoods will be impressed. Yeah. Okay, number eighteen, resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-eight. Approve improvements to Chautauqua Park Ball Field by the J V A A donated funds.
So this was kind of one of those deals, like they come in a while ago, said, is it okay if we start fundraising? And then they did, and then we never really brought it back full circle. So when you read the city code, it talks about improvements being made should be recommended from the park board to the council. They're ready to start like yesterday, so we just came out with Adam and Bill Dre and. Caleb from J V A A.
I think this will bring a lot of people to our town.
Nice, absolutely.
A field that is, um. Like that can be played on by several cities and.
Plus they raised a significant amount of money, eighty, eighty-one thousand. Five hundred.
If you look at, you know, on the technical side, there's some city funding in there.
Hotel motel, so, yeah.
So I had just said, I would like you guys, uh, to have that consideration and prove it. Park Board will. They didn't have it on their last agenda, but Bill was okay with proceeding and now I'll just kind of chalk it over next time as well and then.
So we're approving it pending approval of the park?
No, you're just approving.
Okay.
That's kind of.
I'm having that resolution to approve it.
Motion by Lester?
Second.
Right off? Any further discussions?
You know, I ju- I, I, I do wanna add that, you know, we've had a lot of. Uh, community participation in upgrading this ball field and I just wanna thank all those involved. I'm not gonna mention any names. They know who they are, but thank you so much for all this, uh, attention and dedication to this.
Yeah, great. Yes, definitely. Thank you. All right, roll call. Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
All right, number nineteen, this is new this year, part of the new legislation. Uh, discussion on the new open meetings training for elected and appointed officials. So technically, I suppose. Denise doesn't even have to, even though she's been off.
If you've been on before.
Okay. Okay.
Because it says do not have to take train after you're re-elected or re-appointed.
Yeah, okay. So this is just by the Iowa Public Information Board. They're. Going to ask that any newly appointed people. Participate in this training, which I think is ridiculous that they're doing it Friday, August fifteenth.
And it's already full. So they, basically, when I was. Talking to Bree about it, she said like chaos shall ensue because they have this rule and they have. One thing of training and I'm like, if it's online, like why does it even matter if you have two hundred people?
But why are they doing it before people have even declared whether they're running or not?
Well, that's because they're basically saying hardly anybody should be, but if.
Yeah.
But if somebody, like, we're gonna have consideration for a planning and zoning person. Like at the next meeting, if we get, I was gonna ask Levi Franks if he wanted to. And then we'll see if anybody else steps up, but, um, like that would be in our first example. If you had. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how, there's obviously people that think they have to take it because it's already.
Is there anything else you wanna talk about with that?
No, I just like in case people had.
Want everybody to understand.
Even if any of you are up reelection and run again and get re-elected, you're all good. You're, I mean, it's a little bit silly when you think like, as long as you've been on forever, you don't have to get yourself trained. That's what the law says. Um.
Okay.
And obviously as staff, we try to. Keep everybody out of non-compliance by making sure that we do things correctly, but. Uh, we'll just have to make sure anytime that we appoint new people and, you know, I don't know when they're gonna do it. You would hope that they would just do. In Illinois, they just had a class that you could sign up for at any time and it was just like a video and you had a little test.
Maybe they'll do that after this one.
So in case anybody had questions, it is not relevant to any of you.
Number twenty is attendance at the conferences. Lisa and I talked about the fact that I think when we did our downtown assessment, they really. Wanted to make sure we might have someone at this conference for the downtown conference in. August fifth or sixth in Muscatine and same with the housing because of our housing readiness assessment. I'm not able to make any of them, um, and some, Brian and Tim and. Several of you've been able to in the past, so I just thought we should put it out here to see if anybody's able to.
I might be able to make downtown conference.
Okay.
And, and I can do September.
Tim could do Octo, August and, and Brian, you think you could do the housing one?
I can do September, yeah.
I'll be in Chicago for Brown Fields for the first one.
Yeah.
The reason that when I went last year, that's why I learned about. I was at the downtown.
That's what it was.
Yeah, that's right.
So I don't have to do September. Somebody else wants it, that's fine, but I, I'm available for September.
No, you just go right on the.
Yeah.
So I need to, I'll check with, um, Jim Thompson, cause it was. When you do your downtown assessment, you get two free admissions to the downtown.
We don't have anybody else that wants to go for free? In August?
You obviously would have to figure out.
It is National Night Out.
That's free.
Yeah, the fifth is National Night Out night.
See their Tim or nobody.
No, I doubt I would be able to.
Okay, take your twins with you.
That's why I might be able to go. That's Wednesday.
All right.
Okay.
All right, you know, I'll email Jim and just make sure we can still register.
September, you've got school, I suppose.
I can't make it to one.
Okay, all righty. Well, I appreciate you guys if you're willing to go, so thank you. Number twenty-one, update on Ward one election for the vacant term, another new law.
Newer that hardly anybody knows about, including even Bree wasn't.
Yeah.
So I went to Mickey at the league and. Um. Got the code number and stuff, because the attorney is like, they don't even talk about it hardly. So it basically says that the appointment, any appointment that shall be made within sixty days after the vacancy occurs. And shall be for the period until the next regular city election. Unless there's an intervening special election. So, um, Bree's opinion was based on the fact that we submitted. Or that Janice was approved two weeks ago today. That as of tonight at midnight, we're past the fourteen days. So that would have been like the special election if somebody had filed a petition. Um, and that obviously would have cost us money. So that was partly why I. When I found out, when I got to my conference and everybody was kind of talking about it. I just thought we better put it out there because if somebody was thinking we should have a petition. And then instead of it just being part of our normal election, I'm going to pay for it. Like that would cost us thousands of unnecessary dollars for two more, two extra months or six weeks. So. I'll have to deal uh with the election office at the courthouse with Jill and her staff and then see how that works, so. I'm assuming it'll have to somehow be clear on the ballot that it's only a two-year term, since normally it's four. Um, and then Janice, you'll have to decide if you want to run for that. And then, of course, we have um. Brian's spot, Tim's spot and the mayor's spot are the other.
They're all oh, so or up up for real.
Up right, so it's skewed because normally we have two with the mayor and three on the not mayor year.
Yeah.
Well, I guess the mayor's every year here.
Every two years. Yeah.
Right.
Which is also challenging.
Yeah, so. Anyway, that was different than what we talked about last.
You committed the two and a half years.
Yep. All right, number twenty-two is upcoming city council meeting. The regular meeting will be on um Monday, August fourth. And then twenty-three reports, city administrator report.
So I am not a fan of uh attending remotely, but my brownfields requirement to attend because we got that grant, I have to be there eight o'clock in the morning. I like driving at night, but.
In Chicago.
Eight P M to four A M is probably not wise for me to drive. So I think that I'm going, I have a friend in Chicago, I'm gonna go for the weekend. And then I'll work remote on Monday and then I'll log into the meeting Monday night and then I'll already be there, so. I'll still be here, but I'll be remote for the meeting.
Lisa, what what what's your on your agenda for this conference, if I may?
She has to participate.
I have to be there for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and I think a little bit on Friday morning and it's. It's just all about learning about brownfields and all the different requirements. Based on the fact that we got that five hundred thousand dollar grant.
And that that, I guess that was my question for it, because I know we had some brownfield money given to us, and I just wondered if you had an agenda going there, I. You know, I didn't want to, you know, that's all I was asking, if you had a specific reason that you were, that you had in mind.
It is the.
It's required of someone and I haven't decided anyone else to delegate the responsibilities to.
I get it, yep.
And this is their national conference, so. Two years ago, it was in Detroit when I spoke at it about the middle school housing project before it was done.
Yeah, no, it seems to me that we we could qualify for a whole bunch of brownfield money if we just knew how to go about it. But maybe I'm wrong.
We already got the five hundred, so the five hundred thousand that we just received is.
Planning.
For two properties that we identified and then up to sixteen total assessments, I think it was like. I don't know, it was like eleven phase one and five phase two, so we have this five hundred thousand dollars to spend in the next five years. Towards evaluating and assessing brownfields and in order to get that. Someone has to be present.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'll have more questions for you on this later, but I'm, I am curious as to what the requirements and restrictions and stuff are on spending that money.
Well, it's. It's very clear, it's already spelled.
It's already spelled out.
Like.
I I just think I I have questions and I'll get with you on them. I I just have questions.
Yeah, we can give you guys the, there's like a summary report that went in with the application, but it's like there's community input. So we have to get, remember how we had talked about hiring Terricon and then I have to. Do an R F P. So we have to do that and then they come in, they'll do community assessments, they help you figure out which lots. Um, different things like that that need to be cleaned up or at least assessed and then. If you figure out ones that have to be cleaned up, then the next grant you can apply for is cleanup money as opposed to just assessment.
And it's a lot more difficult to get cleanup money if you haven't applied for and received the planning, the the assessment money.
Right.
So it's it's part of the process and then after the cleanup, then you can go for redevelopment. Funding, so it's a long process.
Couple of other things, um. Just a reminder that we have those lots for sale, so there's ads or whatever, a big. Thing on Facebook that I'll kind of republish, we've talked about it. Um, at the meetings, obviously through putting them up for sale, and then I also did a direct mailer. The average lot, it's on both sides of every lot that's for sale. I thought about getting lot for sale signs and just plapping them in every yard as well, just like the most attention that we can get, like someone driving around.
That's what I've seen in other towns, so.
Right, you know, just kind of put something on there like call city hall or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, they're not due till August twelfth, so we have another solid three weeks. Um, we have, I think, three or four bids already. I can't tell which lots they're for, but. Um, obviously, it also includes miners taking down those five lots, so it's the. And now with the help of all of our four-headed nuisance team, we're probably, I feel like, gonna have like sixteen more within a second.
Speaking of nuisance, do do we have any uh information on how that hot tub got down to our recycle bins today or yesterday?
So we know that uh the people were spotted by a female resident who saw it, but of course. Like people don't get in our mode of like get a license plate, so we know that it was a black truck with a trailer with the Nebraska plates. We also know that someone spotted it on the east side of Washington Street, so we know that on Saturday midday was cutting east westbound on Washington. They dropped it off, not only was there a hot tub, but hiding behind the dumpsters when you did further investigation was a piano. And the cover to the hot tub.
Wow.
So the guys went down there, got it out there, got it out of there right away. Uh, we have the bill from the land though to to the transfer station. Um, I don't know that we're gonna be able to find out, it's gotta be somebody ratting out somebody that says they know where that hot tub came from, so.
We just have a cleanup.
Comments this morning, Erin, I heard it. Yeah.
I've said this a hundred times, I'm gonna make it a hundred and one. We need some kind of a camera security system in our downtown area. Period.
I know, we're we'll work on it. I have to figure out where.
Learning about that too, so. I said the challenge is wifi and power.
Well, we, you know, and well, once again, we have, we have had.
I mean, obviously you might know the person, but ideally you have a plate reader.
Yeah.
So most people drive in northbound. I don't know, like maybe Mark Jackson, it could be in the back of his.
My whole thing is, it it wouldn't matter if they dumped it there or they will dump it at the brush pile. It was gonna get dumped somewhere in town.
Not if we have proper security, Adam, if we have proper security, people won't be doing that stuff.
Yeah.
Sixty dollars for the boat.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the beast heavinessness of it. Um, anyway, we're also starting mosquito spraying pretty random, like if we have any forecast of rain in the next couple of days, then we don't get. Um.
It hasn't been too bad.
It hasn't been bad, but like we're probably just gonna put a post out there like, and I think Clint talked about doing some of it and it's like, uh. He's like two to four A M when nobody's around is when we're out there. So in case there's reports of random squirting of.
So does anybody know how long that stuff is effective once you spray it in the air?
It just depends on the weather.
I see. It's seventy-two hours if it doesn't get direct U V light, but if it, once it gets direct U V light, it starts to burn just like a four year old pass, so. Late evening and early morning is your best time, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Um, and then there was also, I'm gonna send this out to you guys, but at the library on Wednesday. Evening, the twenty-third, there's a. Like if anybody saw, there were like reports of like, we're at the highest cancer areas in the country, Iowa was one of the highest, and then our county was. One of the highest within the state. Um, and so I reached out to the people that let us know about it and they just sent me a flyer that I'll put out on Facebook. Um, but it's at the library, I believe, from five thirty to six thirty, if anybody's interested in this Wednesday, um, they're. From. The Iowa Environmental Council, so I think it's just meant to be. Like an educational piece on. If you've had impacted, you know, cancers impacted you, there's a short presentation about cancer and health data. Fun fact, the flyer they just sent me says Woodbury County. Whatever, at the top it says Montgomery County Listening Station, so it says Iowa was the second highest cancer rate in the U S. And Iowa is one of only two states where cancer is increasing as opposed to. Must be staying the same or decreasing, so anyway, letting people know about that. Um. We had our first printing of utility bills from the printer. If you got those, probably noticed the envelopes were a little bit different. Um, and we are getting a lot more aggressive on the timeline, so you'll remember the utility bills were now due on the fifteenth, we apply the penalties the morning of the seventeenth. And delinquent bills went out on the eighteenth. So when you think about the fact that we used to wait like twenty solid days after a due date, we had, I think, four hundred and ten notices went out. Which isn't four hundred and ten properties because probably a third of those are landlords, so if you took it's. Probably around three hundred of them are actually delinquent parcels and then. Hundred and so are getting double notified by the tenant and the landlord. Um, but as I've said to the staff, like the more aggressive we are about it and the more the people recognize that they have to pay, people will start. Coming in line with, you're either gonna pay the seventy-five dollars to get reconnected. Um, you know, sometimes I think in the past they would also go out, do as many as they can. On the first day and then just kind of petered off, but we spent two solid days shutting everybody off that we could, so. Hopefully, we can try to. Get everything back to some semblance of order that we're not, it's not such a big list. So. We're getting that. That's all I have.
All right. Um, mayor's update, I just wanted to give you like the slides that we submitted. That I submitted for the Iowa Mayor's. Design Conference, this was a workshop put together by the Iowa State University College of Design. As well as Iowa State Extension and other partners, they did have a consultant that joined us, um. And there were five other mayors, and so in this packet, this is the booklet that we got in advance that we go through for every community. They're going to be putting uh recommendations from the result of our conversations. Um, and that will be an addendum to this, so once I have those recommendations from them, I will share that with you all. But I did want you to be aware of what it was that I submitted. Um, their mapping is great and I have a wonderful map in my car rolled up that's huge, that's that shows our, it's really cool. It shows our floodplain, it's really neat, um, but I was really impressed with the conversations and the ideas that were generated. This is, this was looking at innovative and unique ways of how to address one or floodplain issue. Ways to creatively um access our. Creek, uh, ways to use um retention ponds, reservoirs, other types of things that you can create. And then use natural grasses and things. To help uh use as accumulation areas and that would be in savings of that million dollar pump station. Um, it would just be a beautification area, so there'll be a number of of comments that they have. Um, we looked at some of the underutilized vacant lots, and if you look at the map, when it points out some of our underutilized lots. It is kind of crazy how much we could have something of value on it, but it's a parking lot or just an empty lot. And then we talked about project opportunities, we also talked about our housing. Um, and the opportunity to hopefully. You know, do you, do you start to clean up and redevelop the older neighborhood or at what point do you? Demo and move towards other areas. So we had long conversations about that and we talked about challenges and concerns, and then there's some key questions that we asked, um. With regard to the FEMA buyout funding that's available, so there's some things we talked about that I wasn't aware of as well. Um, but what I really like is the fact that. The College of Design is getting together with the college, with the architecture department, with the graphic design department. With engineering and other disciplinary fields and they're coming out through extension to work with communities. And the curriculum that the students are having is actually to solve these problems for communities, so. I think it's a great idea, uh, I made great friends with these uh other mayors and the staff that was there. Um, so it was great. Then the next pages that I put in here were the brief, the census um quick facts. And I wanted you to pay attention to the things I highlighted, well, first of all, Bondurant is growing significantly, uh, four hundred and twelve percent. In the last four years and their average median homeowner occupied housing unit. Is two hundred and eighty-eight thousand six hundred, also their median household income is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And then their poverty percentage is six point two. Um, in our, in the front of ours, I kind of touched on what ours were, so in comparison, you can see where we are. Our median home value is ninety-one thousand six hundred. As opposed to the state value, which is one ninety-five nine, actually it should be one ninety-nine, one ninety-five nine. Um, but we definitely have a lower housing value of of all of the other communities. Um, significantly lower, so I just thought that data was interesting to show, um. Several of them are have not seen any growth like us, we've seen population decline based on the census data. Um. And poverty rates, you know, we have one of the highest poverty rates of all of the communities as well, so. Those are some things that are challenges for us. Um, as we move forward, and then I did include who all was, what who all the resource team was. So. You have any questions, let me know, but once I have the recommendations from the college, I will get that all put together. So that includes one and two, the other thing is the STAG meeting, which stands for um safety. Technical Advisory Group, and this is as a result of that safe streets, safe suits and roads for all that MAPPA. Applied for in partnership with SWIPCO, so on this one page on eighty-nine, you will see the blue and the yellow. And that will show you the R P A. Blue, the thirteen is R P A thirteen and then R P A eighteen is is the gold. And the communities that will be participating are Missouri Valley, Harlan, Glenwood and the R P A eighteen. And then for us, it will be Atlantic, Red Oak, Shenandoah and Clarendon, and we've had several meetings, uh, one meeting we had um was about. Goal setting. And our committee includes Chief Ramey and I think Lisa was on and and myself were on this time, not sure if others were or not. But I guess. Chief, Chief Bruce was, okay, um, so I included the slides. I I think it's really important that you're aware of what this is gonna do for the community. Um, because we're gonna reevaluate some of our highest incident areas in town intersections that have had fatalities. And or serious injuries. Um, and so the goal is to have zero percent. What was, what was the actual goal again? The zero target, yeah, setting a target to zero. So that we would reduce the number of fatalities. The other thing I wanted to point out that's really cool is on this page on one hundred. At page one hundred, there's a link. That you can go to, MAPPA created a um dashboard. And it shows you can click all kinds of interesting information to find out where are all of the crashes that have occurred in Red Oak. Um, and you can find out whether they had a fatality, whether they were serious injury, serious property. Um, and you can see where they're all located, so. It's just an interesting little dashboard of data, that's. Interesting. If you have any questions about that, let me know. They'll have another meeting in October, a meeting in January, and the last meeting will be in April and then. We should have a plan that we come away with, an implementation plan, there's a schedule that points out. The timeline of what all will be happening during this grant. And the key deliverables are on page one of six, so. That's all I have on that, um. Update on the mayor's youth advisory council, we're having a end of the year picnic at my house this Sunday. And I'm doing the real colors for the kids, which I think will be fun. Um, and I've had a conversation with Cynthia Bankston and Community Heart and Soul, and she's gonna be going back and talking to her advisory committee. About um whether, where this could fall. Whether remove mayor from it and it's a youth council that serves the community. Um, because with my job, it's really hard, I'm not, I'm on the road three hours a day, so. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to continue to have the youth council under me. Um, but I definitely want to see them learning about philanthropy. And about projects in the community that they can participate in and maybe even lead and be on boards to support, so. Um. We'll all learn more about that here in a couple of weeks, I think, when she talks to her advisory committee. Um, city council. See, Shannon, do you want to go first?
Um. I helped the ambassadors with the lunch for the uh pre-fair luncheon before they got started. And uh also our ambassadors met, um. Last or last Wednesday, we have one new member, Holton Thornburg with the, a civic with the country club, which is great, we always need. New ambassadors for our meetings and to promote Red Oak, so we do the ribbon cuttings and everything, so. And also, um, I attended the Caffey's dinner, which was great, they had a really good turnout, Caffey's, Shreveport steak dinners and it was great. Uh, I also did um did some judging at the fair for a history project and for the questers. And also today I talked to Holly with Studio One Apartments. And so I was interested in the um rental levels and so and so forth for um someone that I know. Um, the two bedrooms will be fifteen seventy-five, the one bedrooms will be tw- twelve fifty, I believe, is. And uh they're pretty spacious, nothing I thought, and so what they'll do is um. A ten by ten patio slab two outside, but she said they finishes, of course, they have everything, um. But they'll finish one and then first come, first served, you get your pick of which one you want, but. Studio one town.
They'll finish the first five.
Formation and then as soon as they get the leases, they'll go in and finish all, and she said they're very nice finishes too. So anyway, that was good news, because I know a couple of. Retirees that are interested in selling their homes, which opens up. More residential for.
Exactly.
People that can't find homes to increase our inventory.
Thank you. All right, uh, Tim.
Oh, well, we continue to have Red Oak Area Partnership Meetings and I do wanna thank Erin for the interview there and Ethan for the article on KMA as well and. Uh, Nick did a great job for the paper as well for those, so we appreciate all the publicity on that. Uh, and then obviously M C D C meetings along with um getting Ben on board, which again, we certainly appreciate everything that Steve has done for the. County over the years, but we're definitely looking forward to having Ben on board and kicking us off in a new direction.
Brian.
So I did my normal uh county commission meetings by Zoom. And I just, while I've got the floor, I just, I wanna throw this out there. When you talk about safe streets for all and safe, you know, routes to school and all that. I I question anybody's sincerity with that because for a long time. We've talked about and we get no response about just. Any or a single pedestrian crossing across the highway. In our community where they just got done redoing Highway thirty-four, there is zero accommodation for bicycle or. Pedestrian traffic across there, so I don't think any of them take it really seriously and that's the only comment I wanna make.
Anyway, Adam.
I continue to water the park downtown to pick it up every two days, pound square, um. Had two calls about the fair on Fourth Street congestion during events. Where people are parked on both sides of the street, making a one-way. And kind of hard to get through, so I don't know if the fair board needs to be aware of that because it's supposed to be parking only on one side. Or we need to step up the police presence in the.
Right on Fourth Street, between the.
Right, yep, right through here.
But we agreed to close, well, I don't know, not during the race, you're saying, when we close it?
Yeah, you know, they have the parking there, but we have people that, you know, just stop off, I don't know if they're helping with their pit crews or whatever. But had calls on it, two calls on it.
That was during the rodeo night.
Rodeo night too and. And the Derby Night also. We gotta just step up some presence there or.
Probably need to like, like we have temporary signage.
Yeah.
So we probably need to like put more signs, like if we're saying you can't park there.
A yellow rope with no parking, so it's, they gotta see it. I don't know, something, it it could be an easy fix, but I I got, I received two calls on it.
Yeah, we can shout at the fair board so they're aware.
You know, just nothing, just nothing that's, I'm glad that people were at the fair intending it, but we gotta. Be able to get, if there's a emergency and we can't get down that street or accidents, so.
I have let you guys know too with the fair board about the food permit thing, I kind of tried to do a something, something like. I would have had no reason to know that I shouldn't just talk to them about it, everybody got all upset, like, well, we never had to do this before. And I can't figure out, you amended the food truck ordinance in twenty-three, but I'm assuming there was one sometime before that?
There was, there was some conversations about this last year because of Redbri.
Well, remember, it was Redbri, the the fair board's vendor, they did not transfer over to Redbri and that was a Redbri. Or rule, that wasn't ours, they, they were a little upset about that, but, I mean, they had to do it or they.
But the fair board knew that they had to have the.
Yes.
You know, maybe back then, but they didn't know.
Redbri, we made it, we talked down.
Right, well, they said they thought they were exempt because they're on coming land and I was like, this is a rule.
Inside city limits, yeah, so now they know next year.
So we'll, along with the parking, you know, we'll have to kind of make a list and see if we can maybe attend.
It's not about the fair, it's about the vendors.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Right.
Janice.
Um, I think I actually helped M C D C um meetings, so I helped hire. Our new person, we're really happy he's coming. And I have a question, where are we with the stop signs on Highland and Cobalt?
So we have to either do an ordinance or we have to wait till we finish up on the.
Codification.
Recodification, otherwise I need to bring it three, like we have to three readings, cause it actually has to be listed in the code. So we think it's super important to get done right away and then I'll bring it to the next.
That's gonna be a tough one to do because of how it's not a square section. And how it rounds out and uh people being used to not having a stop sign there.
Usually you have to do like, like, you know, we might have to go to like Brian next door and say, hey, we need your flashing signs.
Because of how it angles over.
It's just that.
But I can bring it.
And they go to it.
And they go through it around it.
Whenever you do the other ones too, I'd like to see us finish up with um the.
Yes.
On one side, all the way, it was originally supposed to go all the way up.
I mentioned that last time, so on Cobalt, it was supposed to be no parking from Eighth Street all the way down. But for some reason only got listed from Boundary all the way down, so.
Sometimes, I mean, it's just that.
That was supposed to be in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, just have to drive through sometimes, it does.
I'll send you guys, I'll send you the code as it is, like that was our next chapter and I had. Chief go through it and like mark all the questions that were there, so I can send that to you guys. And then if you have any comments, obviously like, I don't know where people think about.
Yeah, and back to the M C D C, Ben was um a great candidate and we are really. Stupid that he is someone, so we see good things happening and thanks to Steve, which he went to his.
Retirement.
Was very nice, yes, there was a lot of people there and that showed his appreciation.
I just wanna talk about my guarantee.
Um, I I did have a call about the um overgrown grass out by the townhouses. Um, and I did reach out to Jeff Schreiner and they took care of, we're supposed to be taking care of this week. So if anybody else calls, just know that they're gonna be on it, so there's that, um. And then I did judge, I guess I gave some awards at the fair, I totally forgot about that. All right, so do we have any items for the upcoming agenda? I do think we should probably get back to having more codification chapters.
Trying to go through it and staff first.
Okay.
So no one's very talented of the already to our meeting.
I know it. Okay, all right, so twenty-five.
You'll be doing budget stuff again pretty quick.
All right, so I make the motion to adjourn at seven twenty-six.